was also advertised in the Herald, print publication on Friday, June 6th, in accordance with Section 6180 of the South Carolina Code of Law. At this point, if you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by interims. Pledge of Allegiance is that the United States of America, a true republic, holds its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. At this point, I will entertain an emotion to approve the agenda for the public hearing. So move. I believe Ms. Hutchinson, followed by Mr. Burns. Any discussion? Very not? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. We truly appreciate your interest and your involvement and your willingness to take time to participate in this public hearing. Your voice matters, and the Board looks forward to hearing your input on the matters at hand. As a reminder, this hearing is specifically intended to give members of the community an opportunity to share their thoughts, concerns, and feedback and ask questions. This is your time to speak following the public presentation, and the Board is here to listen. Board members will not be responding, engaging in discussion, asking staff questions, or debating during this hearing. Our opportunity to speak or take action will come during the regular portion of the meeting, which begins at 6:00 PM. We ask that both the Board and the audience members respect this format so that all voices can be heard in an orderly and respectful environment. We thank you again for being here and for helping us maintain a thoughtful and productive process. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Interim Superintendent Dr. Fitz.
I would like to say good afternoon to our Board members, to our staff of Rock Hill Schools, and certainly our parents and community members who are here tonight, those who are joining us online as well. Thank you for your interest, your supportive input as we move along and look to complete the budget process in preparing for a very successful 2025-2026 school year. The presentation outlines our proposed general fund budget for 2025-2026. It includes both our anticipated revenues and expenditures. The goal tonight is to be transparent, explain where our funding comes from, where it goes, and the adjustments that we are making responsibly to make sure that we're managing taxpayer dollars with responsibility, as well as maintaining a strong support for our students and our staff. As interim superintendent, I'm joined also this evening by Mr. Harry Miley from Miley and Associates. If you recall, Mr. Miley has been a part of supporting us and assessing our funds and assessing our business services structure. He's here as a part of the process to support. And then also Mr. Bobby Barnes. Mr. Bobby Barnes is our Executive Director of Finance for Rock Hill Schools. Makes a lot of things happen in business services involved, and I want to thank them both for being here. First and foremost tonight, I want to say that for the public's information and benefit, I would like to state that Administration has developed and is proposing a balanced budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. The budget is based on anticipated revenues of $232,836,528, and proposed expenditures of the same amount, the same amount, $232,837,528.
Excuse me, can you ask them to mute? I couldn't hear what you said, Dr. Jones. I apologize. Can you ask them to mute? Can you repeat that? Ask them to mute their phones.
Pete, Melissa, can you please mute your phones?
My phone is muted.
Okay.
Pardon the interruption.
Sorry about that, Dr. Jones.
No problem.
Will you repeat that again, please?
Want to make sure, and let me go back and restate, make sure everyone hears that we are proposing, Administration is proposing, a balanced budget for fiscal year 25-26. The budget is based on anticipated revenues of $232,836,528, as well as proposed expenditures of the same amount, $232,837,528. Y'all hearing me okay? Everybody, you're hearing me? Okay, good. The slide that is presented shows where our operating money comes from. It includes funding from state sources, local property taxes, and some federal and other miscellaneous sources. You see a comparison on this slide to last year, so that we can highlight our increases or decreases. The total revenue is shown alongside the previous year's figures to indicate any changes. This shows a decrease of $6.4 million from the previous year. The one-time use of funds refers to non-recurring revenue sources that were used to balance the budget in a given year. For last year, the district relied on $15,819,573 in one-time funds, which included from capital funds, $8.3 million and $7.4 million from our fund balance. In the proposed 2025-26 budget, this drops sharply to just $1,643,303, representing the only use of a portion of fund balance with no transfer from capital funds. Here, we break down the revenue a bit more. For example, state revenue includes base student funding and categorical aid, while local revenue comes mostly from taxes. Other sources might include small grants or transfers. This slide helps paint a full picture of our income before we look at spending. This side slide shows in detail the changes in state and other revenue sources. One major change this year is nearly $9 million decrease compared to last year, primarily because some of the one-time COVID-related funds have ended. We also see increases in required insurance costs and reductions in state aid adjustments. These changes do require us to be very strategic with our spending, and you see those sources that are listed. This slide provides an overview of how we plan to spend our general fund money. The bulk of our budget continues to go towards salaries and benefits, which reflects our commitment to maintaining competitive compensation and strong student services. This is about 91% of our budget. We also fund transportation, safety, and academic materials, as well as support services. This focus is about ensuring students that they have what they need to succeed. This supply, this slide supports understanding of where the majority of the district funds are being allocated. This slide provides us an overview of the projected expenses for 2025-2026 fiscal year. It breaks down spending across major operational categories: personnel, program services, and capital needs. This slide supports understanding of where a majority of the district funds are being allocated. This slide provides a budget expenditures, or list of budget expenditures, due to state mandates and anticipated increases in other items listed. This slide lists new or increased costs compared to the prior year. Here are the added costs that we, Rock Hill Schools, must cover this year. This includes salary increases for eligible teachers, a 2% increase for bus drivers, and rising employer health insurance premiums. We're also increasing funding for school safety, student programs like high school bans, and filling in the gap where federal funding has been reduced. These additions reflect our priorities in staff support, student enrichment, and safety. So in order to make our budget work, we also had to make some very tough decisions this year in preparing for to reduce spending in the upcoming year. These include streamlining programs, such as discontinuing the school virtual option at the middle level, however sustaining that at the high school level, providing day treatment, however look at outsourcing that program. We are also adjusting staffing and reducing certain discretionary budgets across departments. These reductions help us absorb cost increases while staying fiscally responsible. And these next slides just go back and give visual representation to what has been shared regarding our budgeting. This slide, of course, shows the local revenue sources that are provided, 88% of those coming from property taxes. We go back and revisit proposed revenues with state aid revenue, 67%, with also a state property tax of 24%. Those are our major sources of funding. We also show here that proposed revenues, local sources make up 39% of our revenues, while state and other financed sources make up 60.2. Again, this is a recap slide showing expenditures to ensure we are clear on where our money is going. This reinforces transparency in how we are prioritizing spending based on available funds. It helps the public connect the revenue picture to our operational priorities. And as we said earlier, your salaries and benefits lead in this area. And then you see your 40%, your proposed expenditures that you have instructional with 53%, our support services with 46%. And then you also see what we are required by law for payment through other entities and charter schools. All of that's driven by legislation. This slide summarizes the key outcomes from recent South Carolina legislation sessions that directly impact public education funding and staffing. Now, the state has allocated an additional $112 million in aid to classrooms, with the average amount spent per student rising to $5,884. Beginning teacher salaries across the state will now start at $48,500, reflecting an investment in attracting and retaining new educators. I remind everyone that Rock Hill is ahead of the game on this when we set forth and our Board approved $52,000 starting salary. The state has also removed the bachelor's degree plus 18 hours category from the minimum teacher salary scale, simplifying the structure. School bus drivers will see a 2% increase in their base pay, providing modest support to this essential workforce. Additionally, the employer's share of health insurance premiums will increase by 4.6%, which affects district budgeting for employee benefits. And just for your information, we wanted to show the slide that compares districts' mileage rates with other York County districts. It shows how tax rates vary locally and highlights where the district stands in terms of local taxpayer contributions. Such comparisons help justify potential mileage changes so as to defend current funding levels. This provides a local context for budget decisions and is important for our community to see how we measure up. This helps explain how we fund our schools locally and ensure that our rates are fair and competitive. And that will be the conclusion of the slides. In the information on the budget, we are open to questions at this time.
At this point, if there are people in the audience who have questions, feel free to ask those of Administration as well as the gentlemen of you.
May I just ask for clarification? The people who are watching online, are they submitting questions that can be asked, or is there avenue for them?
There is not. The only way to submit questions is to do them in person during the meeting, during the public hearing, not online.
Yes, ma'am.
I just had a quick question. The divisions that are having a budget reduction, could you define that for me?
Thank you very much. The question is the divisions that are experiencing a budget reduction. Can I identify those? So what we've done for reduction of our, is we've looked at our key department areas. You have instruction, you have operations, you have school accountability, as well as school operations, which you have, which is different from the operations department. So this would be student services in that area, as well as looking at technology and our budgets. We can touch each of those, and at this time, it's a 15% cutting budget there. They have the decision to make to be able to decide the impacts of the budget.
Oh, one more, because I'm unfamiliar with some of these terms. What exactly are instructional expenditures? Because that was a really big area.
It is a big area.
Could you define that?
Instructional expenditures could be digital curriculum. It could be curriculum and materials in the classroom. It could be resources that are used, your students that are using Canvas. Canvas is a learning management system that will be used to support that. Resources and technology as well for students. So those are instructional resource materials, just to name. Some of those are covered, I would say, by federal funds. Some of our title funds cover those areas, but we do have those that are touched and affected by our, by our funds.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Ms. Young.
So again, a question, so the fund balance, that money's transferred from, what money is that? So like, is the $1,640,000 that's going to be a one-time use, where is that coming from?
That would come from our fund balance.
So I'm sorry, what is the fund balance? Is that a savings account? Is that leftover money?
I'll let that specifically be answered, because some people look at it as that. I used to think that that fund is used and it fluctuates during the year based upon what the district needs to do for operations. But anything you want to add about more specific on fund balance?
That's about right is how I would describe it. I'm Harry Miley. I'm the CFO of Britishman, 210 years. The, it's not a savings account. It's not money like you and I think of as putting it in the savings account, and we've got it right there all the time. It's an accounting issue. At the end of the year, it's calculated based on an accounting basis. It fluctuates. It's basically money that you did not spend that year, but you don't know that until the accounting is done at the end of the school year, for your fiscal year. And so it's used, it's very positive. It's very important for bond rate hearings, because the credit agencies want to make sure that you're a sound fiscal entity and that you are not operating month to month. We always recognize the importance of it, because you might have, expenditures are usually pretty regular. You pay people on the monthly basis, so you have expenditures on the monthly basis pretty regular, but your revenues are not. And so you might not get any local tax money until the end of the, you know, until February. So you don't, you need that fund balance there, the extra funds there to get you through and make payroll. You know, a lot of school districts and small school districts, they actually have to borrow money to make payroll, it's called tax anticipation notes. So the fund balance is there. It's not like a savings account, but it is an accounting accrual, I mean, it's an accounting issue at the end of your fiscal year. You do want to have a fund balance for those reasons, and more reasons than that that I've just mentioned, but it's not something that you can take money out and, like you would your savings account. Does that help?
Well, it helps a little bit. So we spent $15 million of the fund balance the year prior to this past year, right?
Yes.
So one year we spent $15 million of that. We're proposing to spend a million. What is our fund balance right now? So is this money rolling over from last year's budget?
And let me clarify, this, it was a total last year of $15.8 million, but remember, $8.3 came from capital funds? So really from that, it was $7.4 million that we pulled from fund balance.
Normally, for instance, if you had a budget, at the end of the year, you ended up, the we frequently had a fund balance contribution at the end of the fiscal year, the state would allocate more money than we had planned in our budget, and we'd end up with extra funds. We would have severe excess vacancies in our staffing, and those funds, we had expenditures for those people in those positions, but they never were hired. And so we spent less, and we got more revenue from the state. And at the end of the year, we would have a excess fund balance and we, excess revenues, and we make that contribution to the fund balances, how it bills itself. But that's how you build it, and then if you need it, you can take, take that fund balance available. Does that help?
That does help, thank you. So the $1,000,000, the $1,640,000 that we're budgeting from the fund balance, is that the entire fund balance that exists right now?
I don't know. I don't have that documented in front of me, but from your audit, there is a fund balance for, for last year's June 30th, because I would imagine your audit has not been finished.
Last year, June 30, we had, I think, a $53.5 million general fund balance. And so what I did is I just tried to calculate what our general fund balance will be at the end of this year, and it looks like it's going to end up around $46.3 million.
And our policy states, your Board policy, does state that any unassigned general fund balance for the year, that we can, we must maintain a minimum of 17% and a maximum of 25%. So the balance is right in that area.
Is that 17 and 25 is the percent? Is that seventeen and twenty-five is, is the percent of your budget?
Correct.
The idea is that you, it is, it's smart financial business to have a fund balance, because if something happened, in fact, it's recommended that you have two and a half months of operating expenses in your fund balance at a minimum. And most districts, if possible, they have a little bit more cushion than that.
So with forty, with forty-six, forty-six point three million that we estimate right now, and based upon, based upon that two hundred and thirty-two million, that with expenditures, with looking at seventeen percent, we would need to keep right now projected thirty-nine point six million. That would be our floor that we would have below that policy. We would need to keep that and have that available on hand.
Thank you all for explaining that. That's really kind of reassuring, because when you say our budget is two hundred thirty-two million, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars, and you're spending every dollar of that, it kind of becomes worrisome what if you need to spend more?
Right.
But then you do have the fund balance to draw from. And if you don't spend all that, that money goes into the fund balance, correct? Am I understanding correctly?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. In general, if I may. So the slides and everything, they show very big numbers in very big categories. Is there a more detailed breakdown of the spending for salaries, instructional, anything that the public has access to?
It's not at the moment, but, you know, I can come up with something later on, but I don't have it at the moment.
You would have that for la, for, once you have your audit done, you would have that for last year. Very detailed, available every year, but you wouldn't have that for the upcoming year yet.
Right, after it's audited, that's then it's the final, so when our audit is presented, I'll have a detailed breakdown.
And I would, that's not a, that's not a very defined, definitive answer, but you don't know what the, we, you've budgeted forty-two positions, and you don't fill four of them. Well, so it's saying that we're going to spend this much for that, those positions. At this point, it's a projection and an estimate, but you really may not end up spending them. So the audit will be detailed and, and this is what you did spend. You did spend funds for supporting thirty-eight. You did not spend the funds for the other four, although you had projected them and included them in the budget. Things are, we seem to, we always get criticized for missing estimates or something, but at this point, next year's budget is pretty much of an estimate. The state has historically changed our revenue estimates during the course of the year. We have vacant, you have vacancies, you have changes, so it's the best estimate right now, so if that helps. But if you want to find out what was done last year, the audit is detailed as you can want.
Thank you. Well, that, that does help, but so what information you would have is not necessarily the dollar amount, but say the number of positions? So is that...
They have an estimate for the dollar amount. Yeah, they have an estimate.
Right, but if you had the information of, here's how many teachers, or here's how many teachers at the elementary level, or here's how many English teachers, has that information already been established for the upcoming year?
We have, we have allocations that are based upon the upcoming year. Now, I'll recall that in the budget cuts, we eliminated thirty-eight positions. So we've been working, particularly our human resources with schools, on what allocations are needed and what was sustained this year, because this time of year, you certainly may have an increase in enrollment at schools, so you may have to look at an FTE position, which is a teaching position, you're looking to add. So you're, you're kind of working with some balancing of your numbers. But we have estimated numbers, yes, of how we're going to open school.
And were any of those positions that were removed in classrooms?
If there were vacancies. So for example, we know that the enrollment in Rock Hill schools has decreased. So what we did is we brought that into leverage with what the teacher-student ratio is, and we looked at classes and saw if we had some low ones, as well as any classes that were overloaded that we had. So yes, that work was done. So it could have, the thirty-eight could have touched, but the reason it would have touched was because you, we had to change the student enrollment, because the state funds us based on our student enrollment.
Do you happen to know how many teaching positions would have been removed?
I can get you that information. I don't have it with me now.
Thank you.
Does that conclude the questions from the audience?
So going back off of it, was asked a minute ago with instruction and cuts, what does that look like in the classroom and at the school level? Like, how will we feel it?
So schools have instructional funds that they're allocated based on their student enrollment. And that allocation funds students and teachers work. When we looked at the budget this past year, we did not make any cuts at the school level in instructional funds, but at the district level, that's looking, and so, you know, instruction, they would have to see, okay, if we've got to make a reduction, is there a technology program that is not being used to its max that maybe we could look at? Or looking at certain resources that have been provided from the district level, that we have to make some decisions on that? That budgeting could also include some positional work, or some work with funding, depending on the, the sources that, you know, would impact. But schools also have their instructional funds that they have that they're able to spend. For example, a principal has books that he or she wants to buy for their school. And they have that in their, in their allocation, or maybe they have some federal funding that's allocated.
If certain programs were cut that we use, would we have already found out about that? Or we will find out about that?
So we did let you know that, for example, Virtual Academy would make a decision that we would trend middle school, and we have a high school experience. Those parents know they are preparing for the upcoming year. We talked about mental health therapists. We are continuing our mental health therapist, but we've gone to a billing model for the upcoming year. That came out of the general fund for that. Our day treatment program has been modified, and we are using, or working with MUSC for reduction in that area. So yes, you should know.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just going back to the expenditure reductions slide, I just don't understand some of the videos, like CEP implementation. Do you know what the day treatment program is going to look like for those students that need it? And just some of those study reductions, like back-to-school rally and OEC, what's that going to look like this school year without those resources?
Couple of those that I can mention for you, for example. Let's go to reduction of J-one visas. Budgeted amount is six hundred thousand for that. We have seen a reduction in our need for international teachers due to increase in hires of teachers, so we cut that by a third. So that's an example of how we, we took a portion of that away, but still we offer. Our day treatment program, MUSC is working. Dr. Nancy Turner and her team have met with them and are looking to make sure that we can still structure and offer. As a matter of fact, that MOU is on my desk right now, and I'm communicating with, to make sure that we, we cover those resources that are needed. CDP implementation, understanding is students are going to be offered. All of our students will be offered lunch and breakfast in the upcoming year. That budget was set thinking that it was going to leave the budget, that it was going to leave. So that, that elimination there, that we, we are going to be, as a part of that. The back-to-school rally, we had a larger budget for that. We want to make sure that time at the beginning of the year is important. And we look at that week, because a lot happens to get school open. But we were spending a lot of money, including going to Winthrop. That was an area that we could reduce. So we took a reduction of that, and that has a budget of approximately eight thousand dollars for the upcoming year. Mental health billing for our mental health therapist. We have folks in place now that will work with billing and supporting our, our students, and making sure that we continue to offer those services. Is there anything needed on this?
Does that conclude the questions from the audience? If so, I would like to, on behalf of the board, say thank you for the community that was here today. In addition, I would say thank you to our interim superintendent, as well as Mr. Barnes and Dr. Miley for their ability to be here today. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing portion and to convene our regular board meeting at six P.M. Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Any discussion? Fair enough, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We send the adjourn. Good evening and welcome to the June 24th Business Meeting of Rock Hill School District. We have been meeting between 5:00 and 5:45 for the purpose of a public funded hearing for our upcoming budget process. So this is the call order for the regular called Business Meeting. Global news media outlets were notified and writing of the agenda for this meeting on Saturday, June 21st. If you will all please join me with a pledge of allegiance, qualify moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. First up is approval of the agenda, so I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Any discussion? Very enough. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Seven zero. First up is recognitions. We do not have any recognitions tonight. Did y'all hear something? I feel like there's something going on out in the hallway. It's awfully noisy out there. Ms. Douglas, can you take a peek and see what's going on in the hallway? I think we have something happening out there. Whoopsie whoopsie. Welcome in, Ms. Oda and friends. That is correct, Dr. Jones. It is not on the agenda.
Greetings to each of you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair. I'm Dr. Kimberly Oda, Principal of Independence Elementary School. The number seven represents completion, and for the past seven years, Dr. Jones has faithfully served Rock Hill Schools with integrity, passion, and unwavering dedication. Through leadership changes, the challenges of COVID-19, and shifting times, he has remained a steady, rock-solid presence for school leaders across the district. There's a story of a group of cousins who gathered to reflect on the life of a late grandparent. One cousin confidently said, "I was the favorite." The others laughed and chimed in, insisting that they were actually the favorite. In the end, they realized the beauty of their grandparents' love. Each felt uniquely valued, seen, and special. In much the same way, last year, a group of principals were sharing appreciation for Dr. Jones. I began by thanking him for his kindness, adding with a smile that I was clearly his favorite. And just like those cousins, the other principals quickly jumped in to say, "No, I'm the favorite." It became an inside joke among us, but the truth is, we all felt like his favorite because that's exactly how he made us feel. Dr. Jones, you not only have shown your leadership, but we appreciate your mentorship to principals and your genuine investment in students. I'm honored to have with me today a very special guest, a student you've supported since his 4K experience. You've attended his 2D Kids Ceremony, his kindergarten promotion, and even his turkey saffron trot. And that kind of personal commitment is rare. It's that uncommon, it is uncommon, and that is the reason why I believe that you'll continue to experience what Coach Don Staley calls uncommon favor. So as you enter this next chapter, know that we celebrate you, honor you, and deeply appreciate you. Unlike the cousins who shared their love after their grandparent was gone, we want to give you your flowers now, while you're here to see them, feel them, and know how deeply you are loved. So many of you know, Dr. Jones' reach has gone beyond Rock Hill Schools, but has gone throughout the Rock Hill community. And so, on behalf of the city of Rock Hill, we have a proclamation to share with you. And it reads, "Whereas Dr. John Jones earned his bachelor's degree in early childhood education from Winkett University in nineteen eighty-seven, obtained his master's degree from the University of South Carolina, and his doctorate from Nova Southeastern University in two thousand and four. And whereas, he began his career teaching third grade at Wesley Chapel Elementary School in Monroe, North Carolina, working his way up to assistant principal. And whereas he was the first principal at Wellington Elementary School, but opened in nineteen ninety-six. And whereas Dr. Jones was named principal at various elementary and middle schools in South Carolina and North Carolina between nineteen ninety-six through two thousand and eight. And whereas he was promoted to serve in several district-related administrative positions in Union County Public School Systems, serving from two thousand and nine until two thousand and seventeen. And whereas in two thousand and eighteen, he was named Rock Hill School District Three Chief Academic Accountability Officer. And whereas since arriving at the Rock Hill School District, John Jones has established himself as an educator's educator, someone whose first response to any policy question has been, "How will this make a student's future brighter, and how would this result in a teacher's success?" And whereas Dr. Jones has held several positions in Rock Hill Schools, and has answered the call on two occasions, serving as interim superintendent. And whereas, it's a rare privilege to observe a professional and public servant in his element, a person who provides the necessary leadership and the moral authority required to carry on the purposes of a school system in difficult times. To volunteer to take on this responsibility on two occasions says more about Dr. Jones, his character, and his integrity than a proclamation could put into words. Whereas, it is my sincere hope that John will remain encouraged and empowered, even in a well-deserved retirement, to continue to invest in the lives of the people of Rock Hill, South Carolina. Now therefore, John P. Gettis Jr., Mayor of the City of Rock Hill, South Carolina, so hereby congratulates Dr. John Jones on his retirement. On behalf of the city of Rock Hill, I thank him for his unwavering service and contributions to furthering the education and guidance of the youth of Rock Hill." Do you guys know I'll come over here real quick, we'll just take a group photo real quick. Everybody in.
Thank you.
You're the best, Dr. Jones.
So Dr. Jones, some people work hard, some people work with a heart, you did both, and you changed everything. Leadership is not about the title, it's about impact, integrity, and heart, and you led with all three. There are people that do their jobs well, and then there are people like John Jones, who go above and beyond in every way, not for the recognition, but because it's who they are. You made such a difference in your work, in your impact, in the way you show up every single day for our kids, with compassion, wisdom, and pure joy. You stepped into this role not to fill a space twice, but to lead with strength, grace, and unwavering commitment to our city and first and foremost, to our students. You brought stability when we needed it the most, compassion where there was uncertainty and clarity during the times of change. You've been a light in every room that you enter, and a steady hand through every storm. More than a remarkable leader, you're just generally a wonderful human being, probably one of the best ones I've ever met. I'm sorry, my husband, but it is true. You're steady, you're kind, you're wise, and you are very deeply caring. We want you to enjoy your incredibly well-earned retirement, but never forget how profoundly you've touched the lives along the way here in Rock Hill. You will always be a friend of Rock Hill Schools, and you will always be welcome, and we hope and we know that you will come back. And in whatever capacity, volunteer, just come by and say hi to the people that, I know you call friends now here in the district. This board, community staff, and students are eternally grateful to you, so we say thank you. I have a little small token of appreciation from the board. I wrapped it, which I probably shouldn't have done, but I did, so you don't have to open it now. But it is a Swedish large crystal votive. It is called "The Rock" by Krista Vodov. And the reason why is because it is beautiful, it brings light, and it brings strength, and it just brings joy, just like you have to Rock Hill Schools. So thank you so much. How about the whole board? Let's get the whole board. And while Dr. Jones is making it back, I would also like to recognize a piece of his real family that happens to be in here tonight. We have the other Dr. Jones and her husband, the brother of Dr. Jones who's in here, so give them a round of applause. Thank you so much.
Maybe it won't give it be returned.
There's corn for the boy as well that goes with it. So that was part of our secret today. This is not the first time we have done this to Dr. Jones. However, you will not have an opportunity to pay us back this time, because it has kind of been a back-and-forth topic. I also would love for the community and everyone in the room to recognize Mr. Guilford, who's here tonight. It is his last day working the board meeting. So Mr. John, thank you for your service to Rock Hill Schools as our technology person during the board meetings. It has been a pleasure to work with you, and we say thank you to you, and wish you the best of happiness in the future. But he has been the one who keeps us live streaming and on task for many, many years, so let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
Okay, so I promise, no more surprises. Citizen participation, do we have any? Do not, thank you. Consent action agenda, currently under the consent action agenda, we have some personnel recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the consent action agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nozel, any discussion? Very enough, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Ms. Akers, six to zero. And then we have the action agenda, which contains the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six general fund budget. And I'm gonna turn it over to you. It's you, sir.
So caught up to the moment. Thank you so much, and I have a few things I'll say a little bit later on, but to work with the principals, they were the group that came. And our principals in schools are champions for children. They lead, they work hard, they're dedicated, they're devoted. We've had very little turnover in our principal pool, because they believe in Rock Hill Schools, they believe in our students. And it's been an honor to work with some of the best principals I have in my career, so I thank, I thank them for coming and making that presentation. Let me go back and review one thing, I just want to make sure that during the budget presentation, that I clearly stated two items. There was a question about the CEP, the Continuing Education Provisions, about that and why that was eliminated. That, of course, is from the federal government that has supported our students receiving breakfast and lunch without any charges. We thought that that was going to fade this year, and that we were gonna have to pick up that expense of three hundred nine thousand. That has been so successful, the federal government is providing that again for the upcoming year. And that's not gonna be a three hundred thousand dollar charge to Rock Hill Schools. Second thing I did get clarification on is we are required to have a detailed budget to be posted. There was a question about the elements on that, we did have that last year. Once we have a budget that is passed, then there is a huge spreadsheet and information that Business Services provides the state. And it will be available on this year's budget, we do have that available last year. If you cannot find it, jajones@rhmail.org, bonding, okay? So if you will, if you will, that in or someone can get it for you, someone can get it for you and all of that. So I want to make sure we have those clarifications, because those were very good questions, and I thank you all for participating. Good evening again, board, as you heard our presentation earlier in the budget hearing, I'm not going to repeat all of the narrative, but if you do have any questions, we can go there and answer. I again want to stress that administration has developed and is proposing a balanced budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. It is based again on the revenues of two hundred thirty-two million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars, and proposed expenditures of the same amount. Couple of slides, I just want to make sure we go again, this is where we stand, folks. This is where we stand in the column for proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. The question was asked about fund balance, and we do have an overage that we are projecting in fund balance. And I provided you a sheet that gives you the information of how that is broken down, and that it is a viable option. We have improved this year drastically, drastically reducing what may be needed from fund balance. And you see that, that last year, the total amount fifteen million, of course, seven million was from fund balance. And this year, it's one, one million sixty-four thousand dollars, three hundred, three hundred three dollars. And again, no transfer from capital fund, so that is a part of what we present with the budget. Were there any questions on fund balance that we needed to answer?
I don't want to leave, sir.
Okay. And of course, we had our expenditure additions that were reviewed to you in the first presentation, as well as the update. Most of these are state mandates that we follow and what we need to work within the budget. There are a few that are local, for example, the high school band allocations. Our bands are so active and doing a fantastic job, but some of the big-ticket items for instruments, we wouldn't expect a student to buy a sousaphone, or to buy a tuba, or to buy a marimba. And some of those are in tough shape, and our band directors came and presented this, so that would be, of course, an increase. Are there any questions on the expenditure additions?
That, yes. I know, I know in the last meeting, we discussed a potential expenditure increase of certain salaries. I don't see that.
That is currently not in the budget, it's not, that it cannot be approached through an amendment, and I'll speak about that in a few minutes. But we do have some rough figures that we're looking at on how much that would cost. So we can speak about that toward the end, because certainly, in process, the board does have the opportunity with budget, particularly with amendments. If we can have our budget passed tonight. Expenditure reductions, we've explained that to you. The fifteen percent reduction into budget allocations is one point six. Dr. Hilton asked that I go back and speak with senior administration. They're right now determining, and with some of our reorganizations, we have some expenditures that are moving between accounts. What may have been in the instructional division may now be in our administration work, and so our team is working on that. But you know, their input certainly is that our fifteen percent cut is tight, they are going to work to make it happen. But if you ask what would be, you know, if we were able to make any changes moving forward that would support, you know, that fifteen percent, if that were ever able to be reduced, that would be a benefit, because they're taking their budgets at the district level, not the school level, the district level, and they are making adjustments there and looking at. But for example, if you went from fifteen percent to ten percent, let's say you went to ten percent, then that would be about five hundred forty-nine thousand dollars we would have to cover. But you know, we're only be instead of ten percent, it would be a million, a million, quite a million dollars cut there. So that was the input that I received from our administrators.
Dr. Jones, may I jump in and ask three questions, and then I'll say my other ones. Number one, I jokingly say this, but there is some truth to it. I have a logbook, because I can't count, I couldn't get through the math and science classes, so I can't work in percentages. When you say like instruction, we're cutting fifteen percent from instruction, can you put that in a dollar amount for me? How much did instruction get out of last year's budget? And with a fifteen percent reduction, how much will instruction get next year?
I'm afraid I don't know exactly by department number. When we looked at the numbers that cut with all of our departments, it says one point six million. If you were looking at reducing that by a third, you wanted to go to ten percent instead of fifty percent, that amount would be one million sixty-six thousand dollars, nine hundred ninety-nine.
I understand, the reason I asked for that is because at least since November, there's been so much conversation about what our priorities are in this district. And one thing I think has become completely clear is that we want to increase in test scores. And if we want to increase in academic performance, it seems counterintuitive to me that, it just seems like we said a fifteen percent across the board cut, instead of making our cuts align with the vision of the district and the vision of the board, which means one to of the district and the vision of the board, which means one department may have to take a twenty-five percent cut, but instruction takes a ten percent cut. That still gets us to the cut, but not across the board. Everybody takes the same thing. So that's, that's my first question. My second question is in the public presentation, we indicated that last year, eight point three million dollars was moved from capital, um, over to, to balance out the budget last year. Seven point four million from fund balance, eight point three from capital. So that's eight point three less, eight point three million less dollars that went into capital. We all who ride around the city see that we have aging facilities. Is there any plan, and now we're doing a fifteen percent cut to capital budget or to facilities, but operations? That just raises a lot of concerns to me is what do Mr. Vaughn and his team, and sorry, he's just in my line of sight again tonight, but what does, what do he and his team do to make up these differences? Are we talking about the aging roofs and HVACs and all of those? Again, if we're just doing across-the-board fifteen percent. So my question on there is, how much did we give to capital improvements? And all the things that operations have to do versus a fifteen percent cut? What would that number look like? And I'm talking specifically about our buildings and those things.
I mean, I could give you a fifteen percent cut, what that would look like in each area. I could, I could, I could.
Okay, but you don't have a specific number.
I believe Bobby is standing up in, in the, or Mr. Bobby is standing up in the, in the background, Mr. Barnes.
Then I have one more question before you go to the next slide.
Mr. Barnes comes up and maybe he, he can.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, I don't, will you please repeat, just repeat your, I don't know who you are, so if you're, just reintroduce yourself, that would be great.
All right, I'll just, I'm just gonna address the capital transfer. So the, the percentage that we gave you earlier, that does not include the capital transfer yet. So we still have not, uh, transferred eight point four million dollars to, to the general fund. So we still have an option to not.
Okay, so what? So can you, are you in a position that you can answer the first two questions I asked him? How much did we budget for instruction last year? And with a fifteen percent cut, how much would they get this year?
So I can't answer the actual numbers. The fifty percent cut is the fifteen percent cut of last year.
Okay, all right. So I got one more question. Um, and Dr. Jones, you probably, thank, thank you, this is more for Dr. Jones.
And that's, um, Mr. Bobby Barnes with, uh, Business Services.
Bobby Barnes, thank you, nice to meet you, Mr. Barnes. Uh, and thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for your presentation earlier today, tonight. Um, Dr. Jones, as of yesterday, I looked at the district's website. Now, I recognize that it's not accurate because I recognize it's fluid, um, and that we've approved some positions that have not been pulled down. But as of yesterday, there were one hundred and twenty-seven vacancies on Rock Hill School District's website. Now, not all of them were certified positions, but the vast majority were certified positions, one hundred and twenty-seven. Um, we're now still recommending a reduction in J-one visas, and I heard your explanation earlier. Um, I did verify with Winthrop. In May, they had seventy-eight candidates eligible for teaching license, that's it, seventy-eight. Some of them probably won't go into education, some of them are moving out of the area, some of them who choose to stay here in the area, competing with four districts in this county and the surrounding county. If that number, one twenty-seven, and it may be one thirty, it could be ninety. Whatever that number is in vacancy, I'm still concerned with really three working weeks left. How are we going to fill the teaching positions in Rock Hill Schools? If we're taking this option away from Human Resources? I, I, so I hear the proposal, but I got the actual number from Winthrop, and I see what's posted on the district's website.
And if I'm, can, can speak from the Human Resources, you know, that you see what is online, that may not represent the actual, uh, number because when a hire is made, the, the position should fall off the system. I know the concern was, was made a couple of weeks ago, the same thing, looking at those positions and looking at what we had there. But some of those, as they are hired, should be brought off of the, off of the system.
Right, I, I do recognize, I recognize it's fluid.
Right.
But I also recognize for ten years, I served as a school administrator, and how difficult this is. We made a decision as a board prior to my getting on here, but I owned it as a board member, that we would start school in August. I'm just trying to figure out, and I think the community is, you know, how many actual vacancies do we have? And what is our plan to have a certified qualified teacher? If you're asking us to support a budget that takes away one additional tool that people have? And even tonight, we have here that we're being asked fourteen teachers plus about nineteen more either resignations or retirements of certified positions. So tomorrow, there will be nineteen additional positions that we have as vacancies.
And some of those may already have been in the, in the hopper to be hired.
I got you.
Um, uh, so I had a conversation with Ms. McLaughlin the other day, uh, Director of E S C Services. And we were talking about the status of where we were with our specialized settings. And she said, Dr. Jones, we're within five, we're within five, we are pushing to make hires. Um, and, and my understanding, although I, I don't have the specifics, that we're down regarding the need for J-one visas. That, that is a reduction right now.
Okay.
I think we're seeing what is, is called as, as the great rehire. We're beginning to see more applicants come in that is not requiring. So again, that's taking a third off of that. There's still four hundred thousand dollars that's allocated for that. And what I instructed is, if we get to the point that we have to, to look at more, then what are we gonna do to rearrange the dishes? To be able to sit, but that's what Human Resources said they felt they could comfortably do.
I got you. So maybe to help me sleep a little better at night, will you please ask your staff in Human Resources then to clean up the website? Because when you, when you look at it, when the community looks at it and the public looks at it, it says a hundred and twenty-seven vacancies.
Yes, sir.
Hundred and thirty-three, four, twenty-three.
Oh, I guess it has changed from yesterday, so I'm here now a hundred and thirty-four. It just looks extremely scary when you look at it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have more questions, but I'll wait to the next slide.
And I can also provide an update on actual vacancies.
That, that would help tremendously if, if that can get cleaned up, and we can have some real numbers.
Three weeks ago, we were looking stronger and, and actually, knock on, knock on wood, we, we, um, we saw fewer vacancies in math. We saw fewer vacancies in, in the science area. There's hard, and again, as Ms. McLaughlin said, our numbers are down on E S C vacancies.
Well, that's encouraging what I'm hearing from you, and thank you.
We can get specificity for you.
Thank you so much.
All right. And these are the expenditure reductions. I'm not going to go through the pie charts. But of course, the information, um, certainly, um, getting that passed by June thirty is, is critical. We won't have that, but a budget, particularly with your new superintendent, can be amended. It can be amended, um, as, and then moving forward as there are projects and ideas.
So, Dr. Jones, I just wanna make sure that the, the, the public, um, sees this and understands that what we have up here now is the difference in mileage in Doric Clover, Rock Hill, and Fort Meo, the respective school districts. And Rock Hill by far has another twenty-one, um, meals this time. So next year, it's gonna be pretty significant, and certainly I'm not encouraging any of this. I'm just wanting the, 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 the community to recognize that we are taxing our citizens for education far less than anyone else in ours, in, in this county.
Yes, sir.
And that, that's important, um, that's important to me, thank you.
And even that one thirty-two, that even years, it goes to three years.
Right.
We haven't increased.
We, it, it's been the same, it was also the same in twenty-two, twenty-three as well?
Yes, and.
Can I just clarify a point that you just made with the budget? A budget needs to pass by the end of June to stay in compliance with the state, correct? But Dr. Elder could come in and look at those numbers, and we can still make adjustments afterward. But something needs to be in place. Can you just expand on that a little bit for the public to make sure they understand what that looks like?
So to be able to, uh, pass a budget this evening, then that allows us to go into the new fiscal year operating on the budget that we have. We're able to make the adjustments that are needed with the salaries. Payroll is able to make the adjustments and able, uh, to go ahead and work with, with planning on that. So we would have that effective, uh, July first, moving forward. If we're not voted on and you decided you wanted a continuing resolution, then what would happen is another meeting would have to take place between now and you go into the year operating on the existing budgets. Now, there had been school systems, and Dr. Belton and I dealt with this when we were principals in South Carolina, that they passed a continuing resolution for three years, but that's when the state did not have their budget set. We're fortunate, we have our numbers from South Carolina, the state of South Carolina moving forward. So what you would be able to do then, Dr. Elder, of course, and the board will be able to work, uh, forward, making any amendments. And I did verify that with Mr. Miley. Have I say everything correctly there, sir? Yes, Bobby?
And, and to expand a little further on that, um, more for the community's knowledge, because obviously the board is aware of this. Um, Dr. Elder, together with the board, is planning a, uh, board superintendent workshop uh, for us to set goals and strategies for the coming year. Uh, and that will take place sometime middle, late August. Um, we're currently in the loop of scheduling this. So based on conversations taking place now and goals in, in so forth coming from Dr. Elder, we could very well see a recommendation for amended budget coming, you know, sometime August, September, October, based on whatever we collectively come up with with our, so yeah.
So I just, I'm used to a household budget, right? So I just wanna bring this down to a level of, the money would not change, right, obviously? It's where the money goes and how the money moves, and the bankruptcy goes in it and things like that, correct? I just, okay, thank you.
Any further questions from board? Okay, Dr. Jones?
Uh, Dr. Jones, um, one more question, um, and this may be more for, and I'm sorry, I forgot that quickly, I'm gonna write it down. Tell me again, Mr.?
Bobby Barnes.
Barnes, Mr. Barnes. Tell me again, the value of our, our meal is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think Terry Smith said three hundred and sixty-five thousand last meeting.
Three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, and, Dr. Jones, with your permission, um, if we did a pay raise, which, I mean, I campaigned on it, and I've been very clear that what I understand to be support group, support groups one through five. And I understand this to be, and please correct me if I, this accent is more of a question, because I wanna make sure that I understand it. Support groups one through five would be the administrative assistants, secretaries, bookkeepers, classroom assistants, BMA's, CMA's, those people. In my understanding, that internal staff would understand what support group one through five is.
And at what, what level they are, yes, sir.
All right, in my understanding, that right now, those two total salaries roughly is about fourteen million, three hundred dol, three hundred thousand. That's a rough number. I understand that a ten percent, if we did a ten percent raise for all of, um, people who follow the support group one, that'll be about one point four million dollars. Um, are those similar numbers that you've seen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Those would be similar numbers. So, you know, the, the salaries on those appear roughly to be, for the total salaries of support one through five would be a hundred forty-three million dollars, a hundred forty-three million dollars. If you looked at a five percent increase on that, that would be about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. If you decided you wanted to look at a ten percent increase, that would be about one point five million. Uh, your safe side for both of those would be about two point five million. And so that would be an example of what you could look at into the, the new budget year of making an amendment.
So, Dr. Jones, I'm, I'm pulling out my phone, but I promise I'm not texting, I'm using the calculator, all right? So let me be clear. So to get to the number that you've talked about would be about four meals, and that would generate enough money? That would generate four meals times three hundred and sixty, some of your math people help me out here. Four times three hundred?
Just on that, with the five percent of the ten percent, the, the figure we have would be roughly around two point five meals, that's what.
But two point five meals. So two point five meals, which would then get us, I mean, we're talking about one, one ninety-five meals, which is still significantly lower than what was told to us a couple of years ago, from my understanding.
But our estimates right now, we can provide the specific, what we feel that we had.
So three meals would be, would be safe, and we could get to where we wanna get to with our, and, and I guess I'm asking, three meals would be safe, and we could get to a ten percent for support groups one through five?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I do have one, just kind of as a personal privilege. Um, I, I can tell you what, what I would hope that this board would support would be three meals to get to a, a support there. I mean, the rest of the budget, if that's what you're presenting, I'm gonna ask for an amendment, I'm prepared to make an amendment for three ways for support groups one through five. Um, I do wanna say this, and I know this is probably gonna be unpopular, because I do know that there are some hardworking people at the district office. I do not support cutting any more staff from the district office. I think you have done an amazing job of getting us to where we need to be. Um, but there is a tremendous discrepancy between district office staff and school-level administrators. And a tremendous discrepancy, for instance. And I just believe this, this is my personal opinion, but I'm gonna say it. I believe the most difficult job in the district, probably with this section of the superintendent, is a high school principal, period. Um, their hours don't really start until four o'clock, and they're working till nine, ten o'clock most nights with athletics and all the other things. And there just should not be a forty thousand dollar difference between a district office staff and a high school principal. So I do hope that Dr. Elder will seriously take a look at stu, at salaries, particularly as it relates to our school-based leaders, um, and really tell us how we can address that. Uh, we can't tax our way out of it, so that's not the answer to it, but that, that has got to change. We cannot incentivize people to leave the school level. And right now, with our salary structure, at least in Rock Hill, we're incentivizing school-based, um, leaders. If I'm a principal and I got a kid going off to college, I wanna get to the district office, because that's forty-one thousand dollars. And we just cannot, we cannot incentivize that. So, um, I'm just saying that for the district, we, Dr. Jones, did send us all the salaries this week, so I'm talking actual facts. We all saw it. Um, these are actual facts, there's a tremendous discrepancy, tremendous discrepancy. And so I'm just saying that publicly, that, um, if Dr. Elder is listening, which I hope she is, that we really have got to address that. But I hope this year, colleagues, that we will take care of these people. I do not think there's overtaxing Rock Hill. I do think our taxes are significantly lower than others as it relates to mileage, and that we will support, uh, this. So I'm prepared to make that motion and let it fail or not make it, we move on. I'm support, I'm sup, I'm prepared to support the, uh, budget with the, with, with an amendment, so I would like to make the motion.
Yeah, Dr. Jones, can we, correct me, I'm wrong, could we use fund balance money to get this ten percent increase of non-certifieds?
Say that again.
Could we use fund, the, the fund balance money to use that, to get the ten percent increase to the non-certified employees? I, I think the answer is yes. Because a military increase, yes, we are much lower than our counterparts in, in the county. But I'll ask you stuff, what is the cost of renting something in warm health? It's, it's through the roof, you can't afford it. A three-bedroom, two-bedroom house, it's probably twenty-five hundred dollars a month. It's unaffordable. So, yeah, we can increase the military, but it's gonna translate into increases in rent. And we can't keep going down this ramp, increasing people's rent. Rock Hill is one of the last affordable places to live in York County.
So just to, to clarify, because I see some folks in the audience going, what does rent have to do with mileage rates, right? So to explain that, the taxes that we are referring to, um, because of Act three eighty-eight, uh, it is businesses that pay those taxes. So in Rock Hill, one of our biggest business communities are our landlords. So if the school district raises the military rate, they will plot, pay a higher tax rate. And I would mention to say that a hundred percent of the cases, that cost will be passed along to the renters. So it does, uh, so I think overall, my position is, I agree with, with both these gentlemen a hundred percent that a pay increase in, in the nature of typically needed for our, uh, staff levels, one through five. But what I'm hearing from our, you know, superintendent for Business Services, and I see the nods coming from Mr. Miley in the back, or Dr. Miley in the back as well, is that we really do have two options, or even a combination of both, on how to fund that. So I would potentially say that what we could do is pass the budget with the pay increase and then have Dr. Elder propose if that is going to be all fund balance, all mileage increase. increase, or a combination thereof, to propose it to the board at a later date.
I, I, and I appreciate that, um, and I, I do see you, Ms. Lacey, let me ju- let me just, let me just say this, I do appreciate that, and I do appreciate your perspective, for three percent to about forty-five, fifty dollars a year, so we're not talking about a significant, granted, any money is more money, but we're not talking about per hundred thousand, so we're not talking about a significant amount of money, that's number one. Number two, this is a recurring cost, because if we give a pay increase, this is a recurring cost, and what we have heard time and time again, what got us in this situation was using, um, um, non-recurring revenue from fund balance to fund a recurring cost. So I understand that it's not politically popular, but again, we, Rock Hill Schools is not known for, 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 for pa- for doing tax increases, we tax a lot lower than our other people, so we can do what you've suggested, Chairwoman Miller, but then what we're doing is we're asking Dr. Elder to come in here and cut something, because that million dollars that we are talking about doing, that million dollar has to come from somewhere, and I think that you've done a yeoman's work, cutting fourteen million dollars out of our budget, I'm not gonna ask the new superintendent to come in now and cut another one point five million dollars, because that's exactly what she would have to do, or we'll have to pass the mileage rates then, so why not just do it now?
Yeah, I was not, I was not asking her to come in and make additional cuts, what I was saying is, come with the recommendation of which one of the proposals we would go with, which would either be fund balance, or mileage rate, or a combination thereof. It doesn't have to be all one or, or the other.
So, I'm, I'm gonna make my motion, if it doesn't pass, then we can make another, I think Lacey wants to speak.
I'm gonna explode. All I can say is a better place, yes, there are a lot of cuts, things we don't want to see, but we cannot continue, we potentially caught up come even this year, we do need to give a raise to our support staff, but we cannot use one-time funds to do that, we're gonna end up in the same place going down the road.
One thing, I want to, two things I'd like to say, number one, um, I appreciate the board making comments, so anytime we can invest at the school level, in, in my career, in, in thirty-seven years, anytime that investment, that you look at the principals, you look at the teachers, you look at the support staff, um, that, that is so key. When we adjusted the starting teacher salary, the beginning teacher salary, uh, last year, which, hey, the state is, they haven't even touched that yet, we're, we're excited, and we feel that's helping with us to be able to retain, when we made that jump, we had principal salaries, but it also, if you look at the range, there are assistant principals right now, that I'm gonna talk with Dr. Elder about looking at that as well, because there are some assistant principals that were not adjusted, and then they're working more days, but yet they're, so, that's one thing that, um, that, that I will ask to look at. One other thing I would like to ask the board, uh, is just to, to consider, I would like to talk to Dr. Elder about using any alternative funds we can seek, grants, or looking at other opportunities to be able to sustain the OEC. OEC is gonna be under new direction this year, I see a new process and new purpose, I've met with their new, uh, director, um, and just to say, if we could look at maybe some al- alternative funding sources, uh, and this, of course, will be pending Dr. Elder's approval, certainly in moving forward, but, um, again, I think our, particularly our singleton teachers, if you're a guidance counselor, this is the one, uh, association of professional development you have, as well as our superintendent's roundtable, our, um, our instructional leaders, our personnel, and they all have roundtables, they come and, 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 and look at. An example today, we, we had to reapply for e-learning, or make sure that our files and everything are okay with the state, Dr. Dickey worked with several of those districts to say, hey, what does yours look like, are you doing this? And she discovered, Rock Hill had done what it was supposed to do, because of that networking, that, that payoff, so, again, not necessarily general fund, but I would like to see if we can seek some alternative funds to be able to, to do that.
Motion.
Oh, gee, I think we have one question. But you said, for the OEC, we could potentially take it out of the fund balance to pay for it if we had to, per, if, if Dr. Elder made that recommendation, we could use that thirty, what, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars?
Right now, it's an elimination from the general.
That's an elimination from the general fund, but, but we could find, even use our fund.
We could advance from grant funds or some other things, could be a possibility, I'll be talking with her about it.
Okay.
Well, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you, sir.
I'm very proud of the fact that last year, we finally started to, I don't want to say finally, we started to prioritize our schools when we gave the teachers a raise, I'm very thankful for that. I understand that for us to give them a raise, we had to, to make cuts, and I, I, I think we cut, um, I thank you for, for finding those cuts and continuing to allow to, to pay our teachers, I, I agree with Dr. Belton, we have to, we have to prioritize our schools and the people that work in our schools and take care of our kids, educating our kids, so in the future, that's where I think our budget needs to start, we have to start in our schools, and then if we have money left over for, for people outside of the schools, then, then we do, and we, we can pay them, so, I do want to give them the ten percent raise, I do not want to raise taxes to do it, because I'm, I'm a property owner in Fort Mill, and whenever the taxes go up in Fort Mill, I just pass it on to my tenant, I don't pay for it, they do, exactly. Uh, I think if we have, I'm gonna ask Dr. Elder to reallocate the funds, to make sure that we're paying the people that take care of our kids, I will support that. Um, the other thing that, that I, I do want to reallocate is, is our fine arts, I understand the importance of giving additional money to our bands, uh, because of the instruments, no student should have to buy a student's phone, um, but the success of our district is directly tied to the quality of our extracurricular and co-curricular activities, and we have to fully fund our fine arts, our chorus, our theater, our orchestra, and our band, along with our athletics, so I'm gonna ask her to make sure that we do that going forward, and that may result in a cut somewhere else, but we have to fund our schools.
Spoke with a parent today who was accepted at a charter school, she called and said, how can we ensure that my student can stay within the arts program that is available at the high school, and, um, was able to work, and she canceled that reservation at the charter school and is with us, and that's a great example, because it does attract and sustain.
It does, yes, sir, thanks.
So, may I just ask my colleague something, and, 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 Mrs. knows it, all due respect, and certainly I, I understand that, and you know, it's no secret, I too am a home, uh, property owner in Fort Mill, I too will have the better run of the entire twenty-one meals that they just had, and I get no credit for Act three eighty-eight, I too own five properties, three, four properties here in Rock Hill, all commercial properties with the exception of one, that I have to pay, and I too have tenants in my property, so I, I'm not speaking esoterically, and this is going to impact somebody else, I'm not insulated from, from anything here that I'm proposing, or insulated from anything that anyone else has proposed, um, but I guess what my question is, is there doesn't need to be a delay in, in seeking Dr. Elder, because if the position about taxes is this position today, then this position about taxes is gonna be the same three weeks from now with Dr. Elder. So, you know, at this point here, I'm prepared to make a motion, it passes up or down, and then we just move on from the debate, um, and, and so, Madam Chair, with that being said, I make a motion, um, to pass the budget as outlined, as recommended by our superintendent, with two amendments, one amendment is for a three-mill increase, with that money to be used exclusively for pay raises, for level, for support groups one through five, it may be as close to ten percent as you can get them without exceeding the money that we would generate from the three, at OEC back into the general fund, so pass the most, the pass the budget as you presented, with two amendments, one, a three-mill increase to be used exclusively for support staff, one through five, to get them as close to a ten percent increase as possible, without exceeding what we generate from that mileage increase, and to add the OEC back into the general fund, which is about thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson, uh, any discussion? Very numb, all of us in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes for. Congratulations, uh, Dr. Jones, uh, we say thank you to you, Bobby Barnes, and the entire team that has been working very, very hard on presenting this budget, and I think that one thing that needs to be stated, is that the contents of this budget, and the pay raises and everything that it contains, is something that this board have unilaterally said that we aren't supportive of.
Absolutely.
Where the differentiation is, is how we get there, so, you, you know, with that said, uh, we move on, and we are, uh, excited about the new budget as we go into, uh, the new.
Madam Chair, thanks for saying that, because this is how democracy works, this doesn't make anybody a bad person, this is, none of that, this is how democracy works, we have a public discussion, we take a vote, and we move on, that's it, all right?
That's it.
Can I add something?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Harris.
Yes, thank you, and I hope Dr. Elder is listening, as we're discussing prioritizing our teachers, our staff, and the ones who take care of our children, I am asking if she would consider a bi-week, a bi-weekly pay for our district employees, um, what she's on board, to consider that, please.
And, and I think that that is a request that the whole board stands, uh, unilaterally behind, because me having payroll twice a month is something that will, uh, be a benefit for all of our employees, so we will be asking that of, uh, Dr. Elder as she comes in.
I wanted to thank Dr. Jones, thank you again for all the work you've done in the past three months, and Ms. Smith, I know you're out there probably listening, thank you as well, um, we couldn't have gotten here without y'all, thank you.
Yay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Sharon, thank you, Mr. Barnes as well. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, Madam Chair, I, I also, I, I did not get a chance to, to make an amended, a motion to amend the budget, but I do hope that we reconsider reallocating some of those funds to make sure that our fine arts is fully funded going forward, I know we support that.
Agreed, absolutely.
Absolutely, and, and, and to the statement that was said earlier, you, you know, regarding our planning session at the end of August, you, you know, when we set a budget, that is always subject to potential amendments, uh, if there is new needs that arise in the district based on the recommendation superintendent. So as we collectively, as a board, set goals for our superintendent and for Rock Hill Schools at the end of the summer, going into the fall, there is an opportunity for her to come back with recommendations for us to consider, and we're looking forward to that process, and we'll let you know more about when, when we get started on those pieces. So, next up is communications, um, communications is, thank you, sir, is the segment where , uh, community members can sign up to address the board, um, we normally allocate about twenty to thirty minutes for this segment, and we have two speakers, so I ask that both of you stick with around ten to fifteen minutes, and more than that, um, and I'll start off with, uh, welcoming up Melissa Stow to talk about the general budget.
Thank you so much, um, good evening, thank you, board members, interim superintendent Dr. Jones, and community, um, a lot of what I've written tonight, y'all have already, like, addressed it off, so, I just want to speak on it though, real quick, so, um, I'd like to first thank Terry Smith, Mr. Barnes, and the whole finance department for working diligently on the budget, we appreciate and recognize the many hours spent working on it. I am speaking my, speaking tonight to ask you to consider all the emails, messages, phone calls, and correspondence you received, but I am asking you each to listen to the voices of Rock Hill, our concerns are real, and our perspective matters, I urge you to ensure that the people who understand our district's daily needs are considered in your decision tonight, these would include teachers, school administrators, district off staff, office staff, and community members, especially those of us who know firsthand what resources are needed in our classrooms and schools on a daily basis. Our classrooms not only serve our students, but also are used to train and introduce future teachers, our classroom, our teachers, our classroom teachers show up daily to be present in our classes and in our schools, we work together with our school, our PLCs, and our departments to support each student that walks in our classrooms. One of the budget line items that has been questioned were J-1 visas, there are many different perceptions of international teachers, however, let me share about Mr. Magonda from Castle Heights Middle School, he works with ESE students in grade six through eight during his academic seminar class, one of the tools that he created to support his students was shared at an adept new training institute meeting, um, and at that meeting, he shared it, other ESE teachers and also new teachers were able to incorporate his mini-schedule in their classrooms. International teachers have been able to support their students, schools, and fellow teachers in mi- in many ways, while our district continues to work to recruit local teachers and graduates, our international teachers are showing up and stepping up to work with our students and teachers. Last month, I spoke on our support staff, especially relating to our student assistance, I would like to remind you that daily these professionals support our classroom teachers and students, that they are hired to assist, along with can be assigned by school administrators, administrators, on a daily basis, most of them work second jobs to provide for their families, while also skill buying and providing resources in the classroom for their students tonight, and to meet that, um, need for equitable and fair rates for the support staff across our district. When making future decisions in the community, we would also like to see more transparent and simple ways to provide feedback, some of the community has suggested using the amazing social media, media videos that have been highlighting Second Harvest Food Bank and the new open enrollment program, provided a new and exciting way for the community to see Rock Hill Schools and to be a part of Rock Hill Schools, the posts and videos will continue to increase positive engagement and grow our district by recruiting teachers and staff that want to be a part of the amazing thing happen, things happening here. Can these social media posts be created to share opportunities for feedback with links and instructions to help the community, provide a clear voice to help you and our future administrators to make decisions? Once again, the community is urging this board to take a step back and review the budget with input from the people who live and work it every day, whatever decisions are made, we must never lose sight of who will be impacted the most, the students, the way that this budget is handled will directly shape either their success or their struggle. Personally, I can speak with my own three children, they've had three very different experiences, my oldest daughter was in high school when COVID occurred, she was supported by her ESE professionals at Rock Hill High School under Ms. Archie and Ms. Robbins, they helped her to complete her work and graduate in twenty-twenty-two, however, she is still working to figure out what next steps are there, what next steps there are for her, three years after graduating, she has a strong foundation, and she can do anything she puts her mind to, but she still is growing daily in her independence. My middle son made a very poor decision in middle school and learned from the disciplinary process, he now knows that every decision he makes has a bigger impact, after COVID, he started at Rock Hill High School, thanks to his best friend, he played football under Coach Bubba Pittman, Coach Tyler Klippa, and Principal Al, the program promotes academics as an expectation for success on the field and off the field, he graduated in twenty-twenty-four with a three-point-five GPA, attends Western Carolina, majoring in sports management, he has become independent and needs very little support, in fact, when we begged him during Hurricane Helene to come home, he would not, he stayed at Western Carolina. My youngest will start at Castle Heights in the United Pathways Program this fall, he will have all new support staff, teachers, and bus drivers, he has benefited from all his support at York Road, and I am grateful for what Rock Hill Schools has provided my children, they are each successful in their own way, there are so many families with similar stories, our students are what matter at the end of the day.
Thank you.
And I think, can I address any, is this the point? All right. Thank you, thank you for coming and continuing to speak out, I appreciate it, we've gone back a long time since Rosewood, so I appreciate seeing you here, um, I have, have, if there's any way we could update that, to make it easier to leave feedback or links to it, you know, just things to consider with that, in addition, social media, but as we know, not everyone's on social media, and so, that could possibly reach at least active stakeholders within the Rock Hill system and not, you know, within addition, the general public with, um, social media, but I do appreciate every.
Created as, as a way to engage the community, um, but that doesn't mean that it can't evolve or improve or change to meet the needs of the community, um, and I think that any feedback And I think that any feedback on how we do that is fantastic, and that is an easy thing that we can work on maybe over the summer to come up with some more user-friendly pieces of this. In addition, I do know that Ms. Monday and her team are in the process of a complete rebuild of our website. So, there's going to be, you know, over the coming year, you know, in changing, in stages, a very different look with much more user-friendly and updated information going out to the community. So, but again, thank you for the feedback.
Yeah, absolutely. And Ms. Monday, you're doing a phenomenal job. But even as a board member yesterday, trying to find the information on the budget and vacancies and all that is five, six clicks down. And if you can just, I'm sure you've seen it as well. So, thank both of you, Ms. Miller and Ms. Daniel, for saying that.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Stow for, thank you for coming up and advocating again like you did last meeting. Those real-world stories means a lot, and it's greatly appreciated. I'm excited what we just did, and increasing salaries for our support staff, it's critical, it's important. I didn't get to make this commentary, but to that, I mean, they are ingrained with, as you advised, they're ingrained in our children's lives. And they are critical to what our children do and how they will go throughout Rock Hill Schools and be a part of our community as a whole. So, excited about hearing about your son being at Western Carolina, that's really cool. So, again, thank you for coming and advocating and being a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, I'm going to welcome up our next speaker, which is Representative Johnson.
Let me start by saying congratulations, Dr. Jones, for your retirement and your public service to this community, to Chairwoman Miller, members of the board, trustees, and to the community. I stand on behalf of my constituents. I come before you today not only as a concerned citizen and a committed public servant, but as the only Black representative elected to serve York County in the South Carolina House of Representatives. That distinction is not just symbolic, it's a mandate. A mandate to speak the truth to power, especially when the people I represent have been repeatedly ignored, sidelined, and disrespected. Tonight, I rise with deep concerns from how this school board has governed, particularly under the present leadership. The decisions made here has consistently failed our Black families and our Black children. And those decisions have been administrated. They have been systematic, deliberate, and harmful. Let's start with the devastating school closures. Three elementary schools, including Sylvia Surk, have been closed under your leadership, closures that have disproportionately impacted Black neighborhoods. Children as young, at five and six, have been uprooted from their classrooms, shuffled from school to school, sometimes twice within two school years. These are not statistics. These are real families, real children dealing with real instability. Now, you are moving forward historically Black institutions. It carries the legacy of excellence, pride, and preservation, pride and preservation within the Black community of exclusion. It is, it is an intentional erosion of Black economy opportunities and a project tied directly to a Black community and Black history. You do not get to preserve the name of the history or historically Black school while locking out Black professionals from helping to build and build its future. That is not equity, that is exploitation. And it is, it is a direct slap in the face of the families who have supported that school for generations. To my school board member, Trustee Burns, let me speak to you directly. You are my trustee, representing one of the largest contingencies of Black constituents in this school district.
Yes.
And you have yet, and you have, you have yet chosen to stand by and silence, complicit in these decisions. You cannot represent Black voters and ignore the very real consequences they endure under your watch. You remain silent as the board, as the board, as the board has two highly performing African-American principals where they demoted them without transparency, justification, or even basic dignity. And they, they probably were dropped several levels, levels below their original positions, not because of misconduct, but because of what appears to be politics and power, not performance. And while we're here tonight talking about education and equality and equity, let's also talk about what happened during redistricting. Me, myself, while I opposed moving the Rock Hill School District to all single-member districts, a move that would have generated fair proportional representation for Black voters, this board fought me tooth and nail. Instead of embracing equity, you resisted every turn and let the record show these are present members that led this charge against it. They did not want a system that would ensure Black voices be heard at the seat and at the table. Let me ask you this, why are you so afraid, or what are you so afraid of? Is it that you're afraid of losing control? Is it that you fear of finally having to share power with the very people who make decisions that impact them? Because if this board truly believes in representation, fairness, and community trust, you would have welcomed single-member districts. You would have said, let's ensure every community has a voice, but instead you said, let's protect the status quo.
Yes.
When the South Carolina Legislature moved, when the South Carolina Legislature moved to remove Black history, and this is one that really bothers me, removed Black history from the advanced place of curriculum, what did this board do? Nothing.
Nothing.
Silence. Not one public statement to defend fifty-two percent of your student body that is made up of children of color. Instead, your silence echoed loud, louers, echoed the louers. And it echoed in alignment with extremist groups like Moms of Liberty, groups that actively worked to whitewash history, to ban books, to resegregate our schools and under cloaked a part of parent parental rights. Let me say this loud and clear, your silence was not neutral, it was an endorsement. We have now seen the removal of Black pre-schools.
Yes.
The exclusion of Black contractors, the rejection of single-member districts, and the erosion of Black history from our curriculum. These aren't isolated incidents, they are part of a pattern, a pattern of exclusion, displacement, and erosion. This board cannot claim to value equity while destroying the foundation of the- while destroying the foundation of trust for Black families. You cannot claim to serve students when you constantly harm half of the population. We are watching, we're documenting, and we're organizing. We still have time to change course, but let this be your warning. We will no longer accept polite discrimination, backdoor decisions, or half-hearted apologies. The Black community of Rock Hill is wide awake, and we are doing what, we are, we are not done waiting for you to catch up. We want real representation, we want real equity, we want real justice. So, let me close by recapping a few things. Three elementary schools closed, students moved twice in two years, young children forced to endure longer bus rides and disrupted school days, two Black history from our children's classroom. And yet, all around the city, we are seeing signs posted that says, "No room for racism." Let me say this clearly, if we're not going to do better, if this school board continues to make decisions that harm Black children, silence Black leaders, then we need to take those signs down, because right now, those signs represents a lie. You don't get to brand our city with "feel good" slogans while the policies and practices tell a completely different story.
Yes.
Don't tell us there's no room for racism while closing schools in Black neighborhoods. Don't tell us no room for racism while excluding Black businesses from contracts on historically Black campuses. Don't tell us there's no room for racism when you fight against single-member districts that will give Black residents a fair voice at this table. You can't, you can't have it both ways. Let me say this, these are words that I hear from my constituents. This is what I hear from my constituents, and that's why I am here.
Yes.
And I have an obligation to represent the people who have elected me in District Forty-nine, which covers York County and Rock Hill School District, is in my district. Let me also say this, I am the only one that's in the delegation that has supported public education one hundred percent of the time.
Yes.
Let me tell you something that many people may not know. When I first ran, Montreal Randis, meaning he knew this, school voucher people gave me money to run. My, my, when they came and sat down with me, my response was that is that my door would be open to anyone to come and talk to me. You can't find a vote because I can't be bought. Where I've ever voted for school vouchers, I voted them down every time. And public education has been who I have supported. I don't get calls from you all. I don't know what's going on in this school district. I have to hear from people who don't support public education that's in my delegation. And I have always supported public education and have always been left in the dark when it comes to Rock Hill School District. My other school district over in York, which I represent, we have meetings. I met with the superintendent, I know who the superintendent is. They tell me their needs, and they don't discount who I am as their representative.
That's right.
And so, I come to you saying, I would like to work with you all. These issues that I have are from the same people that you represent. And so, don't take it as if I'm beating up on you all. These are the phone calls that I've gotten. I haven't been able to meet with you all because I've been in session. I am bringing those concerns to you all that were brought to me by my constituents. Thank you so very much.
Um, I, I would like an opportunity, and I apologize that I've not had an opportunity to sit down and talk with you. This has been a tough seven months for me, just honestly speaking, but I think you have a pulse on things, and thank you for supporting public education. And that's what we all are here to do, we're supposed to be supporting public education. So, I definitely hope that you and I can sit down and have some conversations, because I would like to know what's coming down from the State House so that we can be better prepared for what is coming to us so that we can make better decisions or good decisions for our school district. So, please look-
Let me say this, I know who I represent. I represent every citizen in my district.
Yes.
But let me be very clear that I have a heavier burden than most people who represent York County. It's because I'm the only African-American that represents in this whole county on a state level. So, you have to imagine, I get phone calls from people who are not even in my district with concerns. And I'm pretty sure you and Dr. Belton, Attorney Belton, get those same phone calls from people who trust you. And so, I've gotten those phone calls, and I want to work with this board. But I want you all to work with me. I want you to understand the value in me, being that I do support public education, being that I am one of the longest-serving members in this delegation, other than Harvey Pila and Dennis Moss, but a resident, the one who lives in York County, I'm the longest-serving member.
Well, don't, don't ignore my phone call.
Thank you.
Next up is Presentations. It is posted as July Board Meeting Date with my name behind it. So, just to kind of inform the community about our July Board Meeting schedule. In accordance with policy, Dr. Elder, in which case, we will have a special call meeting, and that will be announced in accordance with the policy for special call meetings. So, that's that. And, but just wanted everyone to be aware. And then, I am going to turn it over to the one and only Dr. John Jones for his final report of the interim superintendent.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and Board Members. Congratulations from Rock Hill Schools' Adult Education as we held their commencement last evening at Castle Heights Middle School. We are so proud of these students who were truly committed themselves, completing the requirements to receive their diploma while they were simply adulting, having jobs, paying jobs, raising children, helping their children with homework, and yet themselves making sure they complete. To inform that we are preparing for the upcoming year with our administrative teams in our schools. Already, we're working for that starting course, which is going to be August fourth for our students. I do want to make note that we do have three interim principals that are part of school staffs who have histories at school that will serve as principals for their, their, their schools. In the upcoming year, Mr. Buddy King will serve at Rock Hill. In the upcoming year, Mr. Buddy King will serve at Rock Hill High School. Ms. Amber Mase at Dutchman Creek Middle, and Ms. Kendall Futrell at Cherry Park Elementary School of Language Immersion. And they're hiring teachers and getting prepared. Remember, our 4K enrollment is open and kindergarten registration is underway. The state has approved our kindergarten staggered enrollment so that we can have Kinder Camp at the beginning of the year. You can register online for both programs and find out more information at Rock Hill Schools. Also, new student registration and returning student verification remains open online for the fall. Make sure you register, we need to get everyone accounted for as soon as possible so we can prepare for the year. Also, a reminder that we do have summer feeding program sites open for breakfast and lunch at Old Point Elementary, Monday through Friday, Northwestern High School, Monday through Thursday, and Richmond Drive Elementary, Monday through Thursday. Times are posted online at Rock Hill Schools. And make sure you stay tuned to our website and Facebook pages. Folks, there's a lot of positive videos about things happening, including several of our summer camps. We had a STEAM summer camp, our students who are learning in their, in reading camp, running throughout the district, our incredible programs that our communications department is continuing to boost. So, make sure you take a look, a lot of wonderful things happening in Rock Hill Schools. Then I thank you for the opportunity, not only to speak from my head, but from my heart. Somebody told me a long time ago, if you're going to be a principal, you can't tear up and you can't cry. And I've always tried to keep that stiff upper lip, but folks, to work in Rock Hill is the work of the heart. And the tears are the outward invisible sign of the investment, not only that we make in our students, but the investment that this school system has made in me. Rock Hill, I was not looking for you seven years ago. I wasn't looking for you. But here's what happens when you answer your phone call from Bill Cook while driving to work one morning in April, 2017. And that unexpected call led me to one of the most meaningful chapters of my professional life, my time here in Rock Hill Schools. I mean, what can you say about seven years? E-learning, masks, the time that I led a group off the playground because the cicadas were after us. Policies to support students, thrills in athletics, plays from Mamma Mia to My Fair Lady, on football sidelines, watching students run cross-country, baseball. I mean, these are the memories, I can tell you, that I will wrap myself with when life gets a little colder, like that of a quilt that is well-sung. Those memories of Rock Hill are in there, and I'm so grateful for the opportunity that I had. To our board members, thank you for your vision, your dedication to students, and your tireless work behind the scenes. You all have a vision for excellence in Rock Hill Schools. Please continue to champion our total system. To our district office team and leadership, thank you for your partnership, your wisdom, and your relentless pursuit of doing what is best for kids. You made this work feel like a shared mission, and your support made all the difference. And I loved coming to work every day. To the principals and school leaders I've worked with, you are the backbone of our schools. Your courage, resilience, and commitment to our communities, it has inspired me. I've said many times, I wish I would have found Rock Hill earlier in my career. You've led with both strength and heart. Thank you for being the brave leaders that you are. To our teachers, you're the heroes every day in our classroom. You carry the torch of learning with grace, even when the load is heavy. Thank you for showing up. Thank you for the four teachers that allowed me to substitute in your classroom over the seven years and for reminding all of us of why we do what we do. To our students and families, thank you for trusting me, for teaching me, and for allowing me to be a part of your lives. You made this journey rich with purpose and with meaning. And to everyone, colleagues, community members, friends, you all make the job what it is. Public education is still the best value in town, and it remains one of our greatest hopes. So, please stay the course of excellence, keep investing in each other, as so many of you have invested in me. If I ever disappointed you, if I- If I ever disappointed you, if I ever made you angry, I'm sorry. That wasn't my intention. I above all hope that you know I care deeply about the work and the people doing it. So just across the state line, I'll be cheering you on. I'll be back in Rock Hill. I'll always carry Rock Hill with me, and thank you for allowing me to come to be a part of this wonderful place called Rock Hill. And I am unanimous in that statement. Long live Rock Hill Schools, and thank you for allowing me to be a part of it.
I don't really want to follow that, but I do have a comment that goes along with what you mentioned. Do I have that now? Last night, I attended the Adult Ed. Oh, God, I'm going to cry. The Adult Ed graduation. And I will tell you, I've been in education for twenty-one years, and high school graduations were the first graduations that I attended, and I saw some of my own kindergarteners cross the stage. But I will tell you, the most inspiring thing that I have seen, and I want them to know, I appreciate them and the sacrifices that they and their families made so that they can be successful and that they can show their children what it means to be a lifelong learner and what they need to do to advance themselves and better themselves. And they made this choice, and they chose to put themselves and their education first. And I appreciate the effort and the time that they put in. I also was reminded by Dr. Williams, Norris Williams was the keynote speaker last night, and he read the Invincus poem. Every year as teacher, I choose a quote to put on my wall or a word to put on my wall for my students to see. I hope I don't butcher the quote at this point, but you are the master of your fate and the captain of your soul. And I'll tell you, that's going on my wall for my fifth graders to see this year because they need to be inspired, just like those adults were last night. And it left me rejuvenated and refreshed and ready for this next school year. So I do want all of those graduates, I believe they said it was a twenty or thirty percent increase last night in the graduates that they put out. And so Adult Ed, I see you and I appreciate you. I'm here for everyone in Rock Hill School District, but Adult Ed, please reach out. You truly inspired me, and I'd like to support you. Thank you. Thank you.
So tonight, we do have one executive session, and the purpose for that executive session is legal matters pending personnel matters received illegal advice regarding the same. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the open session and enter the executive session for that matter.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh-uh. Yes, yes, yes.
Motion to adjourn, rec.
Yes. Got it. Okay. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Dozel. Thank you. And as we move to the second half of this favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.